Certified compliance with the open records law?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Here.
Councilmember Harton.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Raisler.
Here.
Councilmember Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember Scofield.
Here.
All in present.
Next, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Something like motion to adopt the agenda.
So move second.
We have a motion and second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's adopted. Next, we move on to public comments. Is there anybody that would like to make any public comments? The floor is open. Please identify yourself for the record. Again, one more call for any public comments. Hearing none, we'll move on to scheduled appearances, which we do not have any tonight. Next, move on to the consent agenda. The following matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail or as a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. We have the minutes from the regular city council meeting from June 23, 2021. Bartender's license for Selena R. Barsted, Rhonda S. Bauer, Kimberly M. Pickering for the cell block, Tammy R. Anderson, Norma J. Scally, Christina M. Blodgett, Danielle R. Moore for the Duran Travel Stop, and a picnic license request for Blues on the Chippewa event for August 6 through the 8, 2021, and a new agent for Synergy LLC doing business as the Duran Travel Stop to be Robert Frayley.
Everything is fine.
It's fine. Somebody like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is approved. Next, we move on to the business agenda. Start out with the mayor's report. Just a few things to talk about tonight. As most of you know, the state budget has been approved and signed by the governor. As far as the impact on the city, as far as the impact on the city, not much. Transportation, 2% a year for the, over the two years of the biennium. Shared revenue is the same. As far as that goes, it was level. The one thing about it is there is a 90-10 transportation grant program again. A little bit more money in it this time. They have thrown a little bit more money into it. We did discuss this at the, at the meeting on Monday, and we do have the city engineer and also staff are sort of looking at what we possibly could, because obviously a 90-10 is a very good grant, numbers-wise, and so we are looking at that. There are certain projects that probably fit a little bit better into this grant, and obviously now we have a history, because this is the second round, so we know what happened last time. We applied, did not get the money, but obviously we want to be, to do that. So again, as I said, we should be fine budget-wise, and we're obviously going to take care of any opportunity that we do.
Were you talking about the mental health beds?
Oh, yes. One of the other things that we have been talking about is the concern about mental health beds, availability here in western Wisconsin. There are 22 new beds being added at Sacred Heart, correct? Oh, and St. Joe's?
Yeah.
Or at Sacred Heart, 18 at St. Joe's.
At St. Joe's. The nice thing about it is that will hopefully give us, if we do have to utilize a mental health, that we won't have to drive them as far, because obviously we know with our small police department in our, we have, so that's, that's a good thing. But 22 beds have been added here, either in Eau Claire or in Chippewa Falls, and obviously that's something that will be, hopefully will be helpful, helpful to us. Okay? That's all I had really to report on, but, you know, I always talk about good things that are happening in the community. And I was thinking about this over the last couple of days, and I'm just going to take a couple of minutes, and I'm going to talk about a lot of the wonderful things that are going on in this community, especially after we dealt with the year that we did. I know the whole country is, and the world's dealt with their issues, but I'd like to talk about a few things. First of all, I'd like to mention the Duran Arkansas School District. We're starting their movies again, the family movies up at the Bauer Building Sports Complex. I think that's a wonderful thing, and obviously people in the community that would like to take part in that. The Digg Group for the beautiful flowers that are out here, the Music in the Park, which the first one was very strong, and hopefully they'll have two success, two more successful ones. Off of Digg, of course, the Fun Fest Committee for putting on a wonderful Fun Fest about a month ago, and already planning, the fact they have a meeting down the hall earlier tonight, planning for 2022. The Blues Committee for bringing back Blues on the Chippewa. I talked to some of the committee members, and it's, was, they're, they're doing a two-day event, basically, because trying to find talent is very difficult, because people, some people are out on tour, some aren't, but again, to be able to do that. The Duran Little League Program for, we're waiting for those new softball fields to be in use next spring, but to still have a Little League Program using the fields in Rock Falls and O'Gale and using the high school football field. The pool staff, especially Matt and his crew for taking a 45-year-old pool and making it safe and operational for this community, and of course, the lifeguards for working long hours and getting as many lessons in as possible. The fundraising for the K-9 with the Peppin County to raise the money, not only to start the K-9 program, but obviously to be able to do what they're doing. Chief Stan Ridgeway and his staff for bringing back the National Night Out, which I'm sure we might hear a little bit about during his report coming up on August 3. And my final group is the businesses of this community that not only survived through the pandemic, but also were able to, are dealing now with trying to staff, and I know a number of places that are battling with those issues. So for some reason, I decided tonight I was going to tick off a lot of great things that are happening in the community. Any questions? Hearing none. We had nothing that came off the consent agenda. Speaking about great things in the community, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came tonight, either associated with the Duran golf team or the track team, is Parker Schneider's here. When, obviously, the accomplishments, you have my congratulations and thanks for obviously representing the community on a statewide level. So usually when we do that, we'll put together some resolutions to, to honor you folks. So the first one's going to be Presentation Proclamation Resolution 2009, recognizing Parker Schneider for two first-place medals at the Division III Track and Field Meets, State Meets. And what I'll do is I'll read it, and then we will go through the process of approving it. So whereas, the Duran High School Track and Field Team competed in the WIA Division III State Track and Field Meet on Thursday, June 24, 2021, and whereas, as a result of said track meet, Parker Schneider captured first place in the boys' 800-meter run, and whereas, Parker Schneider also placed first in the 1600-meter run, and whereas, Parker Schneider is the first three-time individual state champion in Duran High School history, whereas, the mayor and the city council wish to can recognize this accomplishment and congratulate Parker Schneider for this exemplary feat. Now, therefore, I, Patrick J. Milliron, by virtue of the authority invested in me as the mayor of the City of Duran and with the common council of the City of Duran, Peppin County, State of Wisconsin, with the majority of its members elected, thereto concurring that, Section 1, appreciation is expressed towards Parker Schneider, the team, the coaches, for their positive representation of the Duran community. Section 2, the residents of the City of Duran are encouraged to congratulate Parker Schneider on this accomplishment dated this day, July 2021. This is Resolution 2009, or 2109. Would somebody please?
I'll offer the resolution.
Will offer the resolution? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And is there a second? Resolution 2109 has been offered. There's been a motion and a second on it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, since it's a resolution, I request the clerk takes a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Harton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Scofield.
Yes.
All six in favor.
I'd like to snap a little picture. Again, congratulations. Thank you. And just a, in front of the flag here.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution 2110, a mayor proclamation recognizing the Duran Golf Team for placing second at the state golf tournament. It reads as follows. Whereas, the Duran High School Golf Team completed in the state golf tournament on Monday, June 14, 2021, and Tuesday, June 15, 2021, and whereas, the Duran High School Golf Team participated in the state golf tournament for the first time since 1954, and whereas, the Duran High School Golf Team placed second for the first time, and whereas, the Duran High School Golf Team become only the third team in the history of Duran High School, High School to be runner-up in a WIA state event. Whereas, the mayor and the city council wish to recognize this accomplishment and congratulate team members Dawson Kurth, Simon Bauer, Charlie Brenner, Kayden Berger, Jackson Boygensen, Coach Paul Chernus, and Assistant Coach John Pollak for this exemplary feat. Now, therefore, I, Patrick J. Milliron, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Duran and with the common council of the City of Duran, Peppin County, State of Wisconsin, with the majority of its members elected thereto, concurring that, Section 1, appreciation is expressed, expressed toward the golf team, the coaches, for their positive representation of the Duran community. Section 2, the residents of the City of Duran encourage to congratulate the Duran Golf Team and coaches on this accomplishment dated this day. Would somebody like to offer this resolution?
I'll offer Resolution 2110.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
And is there a second? Resolution 2110, there's, has been offered, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Harton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Scofield.
Yes.
All six in favor.
Motion's agreed to. Thank you. This is going to be more difficult. We'll try to get it. Why don't I sit over here? I'll, you know, up here. If you want to.
I'll let you know in a second. Nope, you're good. Everybody smile. All right, I'm done. I think there's some more pictures. You get yours?
Yep.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for helping.
Good job, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Okay, next we'll move on to the administrator's report. Administrator Asmussen?
I've got one quick item, then I'll chime in on a number of, as we go through the meeting here. Just a reminder again, and we'll be talking about it probably every meeting here on out for a while, regarding our funds. Part of the reason I bring it up again today is we were contacted by the county earlier today, and they are also soliciting joint projects from all the municipalities within the county for potentially using some of the county's art funding as well. So again, when you're thinking about the projects that you might want to see for, for the city, and we have heard from at least one citizen on a project that got discussed a little bit the other night, Monday night at the Public Works meeting, again, so again, if you see, this goes out to the council and anyone else who's, who might be listening at home or watching later. So just keep those in mind, and we'll be talking about those at future meetings. Otherwise, that's all I have, but again, I do have a number of items to chime in on later, especially with Chief King gone tonight.
Okay, any questions for the city administrator? One other quick note on that. The city administrator has come upon his third anniversary. I will be scheduling a call session at the next meeting for a quick, as we usually do for evaluation of the city administrator on the annual basis we'll be on the next meeting. Okay, any other questions? Next, we have discussion, possible action to accept a bid for the issuance of $465,000 in taxable general obligation promissory note, Series 2021A, to refinance outstanding city tax increment district debt. This is something that we discussed about, we wanted, and then have Josh explain it to us.
So recall a couple of meetings ago, Sean Lenz with Aylers was here talking about basically the, the funding for our current project on Third Avenue, Riot Laneville. We also have some state trust fund loans that we were looking to refinance, knowing that we could get a better rate than what the 3.75% to 4% that all of those were at. But specifically, one of those state trust fund loans was for TIP, part of our TIP district, which, as Sean explained, made it a taxable, basically, note that was handled, would be handled a little bit differently than our, our upcoming bond sale that we'll be acting on, that we're considering the 28th at our meeting. So basically, what would happen here, then, for the roughly $465,000 of outstanding TIP debt that's out there payable over the next seven years, Aylers solicited to, I think, was seven different banks in the area to see if they'd be interested in basically bidding on, you know, for this refunding, and we did get three bids, and so you have the, the sale day report in front of you, and with that, I'll turn it over to, to Josh Lowell with, with Aylers to explain how we did.
Great, thanks for having me. I was really hoping all these guys were just in our prime around public finance, but they're in the airport tonight. So Scott summed it up really very well. The reason that this is going to be severed is because we mentioned this is taxable, so that just means that any potential investors, i.e. these banks, don't, any interest that they earn on the note is actually taxable, so that's why it just has to be done separately from your geo-bond, and that just kind of changes the market a little bit. But these are the results, which we feel are very strong, so we can just go ahead and flip to page two to just summarize some of the details real quick. So Scott mentioned, this is a refinancing of your existing previous state trust fund loan, which was at 3.75%, and then the rate that was offered by the winning bidder, Dairy State Bank, had a nominee, was 2.15%. So this is about as straight shot of a deal as you can get, as simple as that. We're not doing anything intricate, like extending the term or anything like that. Like, what if you do, you know, a home mortgage or something like that, and then you'll be fine, even after you've been paying it for a couple of years? You usually extend it for another 30-year mortgage. We're not doing that. We're just keeping it for the exact same term, so you're just paying the same project to bank now instead of the state trust fund loan, doing it for the same amount of years, just less every year, and so on net, you save about 18,000 over the course of the next seven years, so a few thousand dollars every month. It's, it's really very simple. There's, I'd love to add more detail to make it sound more complex and interesting, but it's, it's pretty flat, which is great savings, you know?
No brainer for no brainer.
Right, right. That's about all I have. Any questions?
Just one, what, where, where lies the biggest, why the biggest discrepancy of the higher level bids?
Well, it's, it's actually.
Not a huge discrepancy, but it's.
Yeah, 2.14 to 2.5. I mean, we're still at a very good interest rate environment. You've probably read a lot about interest rates recently, even with inflation, things like that. We're still at the very low end of the historical curve. So, you know, 36 basis, 0.36%, I actually wouldn't say is too big, but, you know, that's just how all banks have to figure out what their internal policies are, what they see are other potential opportunities for their investment. I'd actually say that these are pretty tight, and if you actually look over to the far right, what this means for the net interest cost, the difference between the top and the bottom is only about 6,000 for the seven years, so between that, it's a couple hundred bucks every year. So I would say that these are actually a pretty close clustering amongst your received bids.
And over the life, the savings, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, is, once we get to the end, since this is a TIP district, we dissolve the TIP at the end, and if there's any money left over, it gets redistributed to all the taxing entities. So the city, county, school district, the tech school, all would get, so if we can do better on this loan over the period when we get to the end of it, then obviously there's also that, that money is then returned to each one of the taxing districts. Now, there was one in Madison recently that is returning $10 million. That's where that, the convention center is. I don't, well, obviously, we're not in that range, but that was an interesting number. That's one of the biggest I've probably ever heard of to return that much money or something like that. So again, this would put us, and the overall situation with the, the TIP and the numbers, we talked about it, if you want to just quickly go through that.
Sure. So basically, so right now, all we're spending on our TIP, and again, we know that we're going to have some, some changes to that when QuickTrip comes in, we talked a little bit more even at the other night at the Public Works regarding some operations we're doing for them that we're splitting costs with, but also some potential changes to Hardy Street. So, so we know we're going to have some more expenditures within the TIP district, but right now, this is all we have for expenditures. So even, so as you see, the, the current debt service, 74,340, the only cost we had in the TIP, that's actually being reduced to about 71, which right now is still better than by a few thousand dollars of what we're generating every year within the TIP. So that's a good thing, and we know what, things are going to go a lot better once QuickTrip moves in and things of that nature. So, so the mayor's right, I mean, right, the way we're headed right now is probably earlier paying off the TIP, either earlier paying it off or finding more projects to, because we can go off to 2033. So we got some time to potentially do some other projects, and again, that encompasses downtown, TIP district here is pretty large. So, so basically, this just allows us to have a little more flexibility with what we want to do within the TIP.
Scott, is 2033 the final year?
It's the final year of the TIP. Expenditure period, I think, is tied to this 2028.
Right, right. So that's what you want to be thinking. So this will take you through the end of the expenditure period, which gives you, you know, about five or six more years to think about adding new projects between now and then. So that's the cutoff line. It's five years before the full life of the district, before you can no longer initiate any new projects. And so the remaining five years of the district will be continued to take in new increment for, to pay off those existing obligations. So now's a good time, you got a few more years, so it's not like you have to, you know, jump the gun or anything like that, but, you know, to always be thinking about that in the back of your head, to maximize the district for as much as you can possibly do, so you don't leave anything on the table later that, you know, several years from now you wish you would have actually used that money for, now that it's active. And just one other quick thing on this, so the closing gift for this loan, where the procedure funds will be August 4, so you got about three more weeks for that. So we'll just stay in touch with you guys to make sure that we're dotting the t's across the i's for the WBA forms, and if you could sign the, the, the form, you can scan that in and it's not going to take forever.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion and we just have to get for the issuance with, I guess, Dairy State Bank and.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, the bid from Dairy State Bank and the nominee for the refinancing. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Harton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Scofield.
Yes.
All six in favor.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. We'll see you guys in two more weeks in a quick, pretty blockway.
Next item, discussion, possible action regarding the street closure request for Blues on the Chippewa event, August 6 through the 8, 2021. Everybody should have one in front of you. We're handed out just before the meeting, not with the package. So basically, they're asking for two things. Of course, the streets around Memorial Park, which we have been doing for them the last few years for safety reasons, with the amount of people walking in and out of the park, that, but they are requesting something different this year, to have a street closing for music at, basically, the clock tower, and that's going to be, that music is on Friday night or Saturday night?
Friday night.
It's on Friday night. So they are talking about pulling in a flatbed or a stage-type thing and, and doing some entertainment right at that intersection.
So just Friday?
Just one, yeah, just Friday. I'm assuming then, like, by Saturday night, any of the bands that are in, that they might be playing in some of the bars or, and to do that, so. Stan and Matt, any feelings on this?
Scott, I talked about it this afternoon, and I initially had a concern if they were going to block off Second Avenue West, but Scott talked to, talked to me and said that they're going to have the signs more towards the sub-blocks, so that intersection of Second Avenue West and Main Street would be open, and with that intersection being open, and that West Madison Street and Third Avenue West will be open, and Fourth Avenue and Main Street then be open by the way the signs are placed. I don't think it's going to cause any traffic safety issues with the park being closed, we'll still have Second Avenue West for people to use that come down Main Street, realize the street's closed, they still have a street to, to get back to Prospect Street, so I don't see any issues with it. I think it'd be kind of cool for our downtown businesses to have this on Friday night, to be a neat event.
And they are talking about the band on that stage to go until what time? Is there midnight?
They're asking for it to be closed from 5:00 PM until bar close time, but I don't know how long the band will actually play there.
Okay. Is there a concern about the band playing outside too late?
I'm sure they're not going to have it late, but that's something we should verify. I don't know if anybody knows their schedule or not, but they're talking about having it closed the entire time, but let me see.
Yeah, as long as we have it closed.
Sure.
I think, like, Fun Fest always does midnight, I mean, that's, I would think that's the cutoff.
Well, my only thing about it is to have the music outside, I mean, because even with Fun Fest, we set the, you know, set the limit on it if it's, if it got past 1:00 AM, I'd have a concern.
But the band is going to be facing, you know, the, the clock tower, so the, the noise won't be projected, but I know it's not later than midnight, I think.
Okay, well, and that's, just to make sure that we're comfortable with that. I mean, I got no problem closing the street until, you know.
What time will it open back up? Will it be open for morning business-type stuff? Yeah, it should be. By our time, we can pull the signs inside. I mean, the only problem is if they got a trailer parked right across the center line with the band on it, they may have to. The trailer parked right at the curb, aren't they? Well, if they're going to project towards the clock.
I'm guessing.
Yeah, they want the music to go west.
So the only intersection that's going to be closed is Third Avenue West and, and Main Street. That's the only intersection that would technically be closed, but it'll be set up in between Third and Second, or.
Third and Main. On Third, between Main and Madison.
And so that little section will be closed in front of the slot, but everything else is going to be open on Madison.
So how is the trailer sitting?
I'm assuming it's going to be perpendicular, right?
Center line?
It'll be parallel with Main Street projecting towards the clock tower, is my.
So in order to open the road, the trailer has to get moved.
Right. I'm, I would imagine they have that planned, move that night or early in the morning, but I can call them and ask.
I can talk to Colleen tomorrow to stop up.
Sure. Just to make sure where everything's in it. And now, as far as, if, if that's right there, obviously cars won't be able to drive up Main Street, but are we going to not allow parking in so far down that, are we allowed, you know what I'm saying? So the two blocks on either side of where the stage is going to be sitting, are we going to?
No, that, those roads are going to be closed down. In, in between Second West and Fourth West is going to be, Main Street's going to be shut down, but the only, the only intersection technically would be the.
Basically.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Cell block to the ground.
Would you be, there'd be no parking in there?
Yeah, no, no parking.
Okay, the clerk just found Friday night around town, 1:00 AM, 10:15 to 1:00 AM, the People Brothers Band outside on Main Street. So they do have 1:00.
Like he said, they're going to be.
It's going to be shooting across the.
No, and I, as I said.
And hiring out a huge amount of people, so they don't have to have a.
The, the thing, what I'm concerned, when I heard bar close, and I'm, well, hold it, because that's 2:30, right?
I would, I would guess they put bar closed, because then I would give them the time.
Sure. Sure, if people are still milling around and going in and out of the bars, which is fine, that's not a big deal, yeah, and stuff. But as far as the music itself, that's, you know...
Are they gonna be selling any alcohol out there? No, that's just for people walking out of the bars.
There are picnic licenses for the park going, so just the bars would be selling.
But is there open container?
Yes. Well, um, that's next on the agenda. Not yet. Okay, is there any more questions or concerns about the, the, the street closure request? Hearing none, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the street closure request for Blues.
We have a motion second to approve the street closure request for Blues on the Chipwa, August sixth through the eighth, twenty twenty-one. Again, is there any more discussion? Hearing none?
Are we, are we gonna verify the end times and the trailer moving and stuff before we...
Yeah, well, um...
We can say contingent on that, you know, after you talk to them.
Well, and we can have contingent that make sure that the, um, that the chief is happy with all that, Matt, if you guys are, you know, if you guys, if one's happy, that's happy, right?
Most of the time.
So do we want to put that as part of the motion contingent on?
Stan, you said you would talk to Colleen tomorrow anyways. Make sure they get the trailer out of the way, so we can openly back up the...
Just what we're doing.
Just a quick clarification, they're not actually asking for the eighth, right, because we're just talking two days.
I think on the...
Well, it goes in the, uh, you know...
The morning of the eighth.
The morning, okay.
So, I just did, it's not reflected on the...
No, they have this till eleven P M. on the seventh.
Yeah.
Forget what time they close it all on Saturday nights, it's kinda early on Saturday nights, like, if people were flowers, from what I recall. I think it's maybe ten o'clock on Saturday night.
Says eleven here.
Shut down the music and...
Would be delayed, and then there's always, because some of the bands will then go play.
Yeah.
At some, at the little bars, so... So we all clear, clear on that?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion's agreed to. Next item, discussion of possible action regarding the open container request for Blues on the Chipwa event, the sixth through the eighth, twenty twenty-one. Chief?
Um, we haven't had our organizational meeting, um, so we'll get that scheduled, but I have no concerns about it. Um, everything went well with, uh, Fun Fest was the last event, everything went well with open containers during Fun Fest, so, um, no issues with the open container permit.
Okay, any questions on that?
So this is similar to the Fun Fest open containers, same street, basically?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the open container contingent on the chief's, um, okay with it.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
We have a motion and second to approve the open container request for Blues on the Chipwa, is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion's agreed to. Next, we have a discussion of possible action regarding bids for the city-owned lot property on Off Street. Administrator Asmusel?
Uh, recall that we solicited bids beginning in early June for the property that we have on Off Street. The bids would have been due today by two thirty, uh, we did not receive any bids. So at this point, um, do we wanna have a discussion of rebidding at a lower price, or... The hard part with that is, again, trying to, because then we have to meet to decide on them. You know, I mean, that's what we talked about, the, the bid process seems to work best, because then you're, you're putting a realtor in a tough spot of, you know, trying to negotiate a price and making sure that it's fair to everyone.
And the other thing about it is that we have, uh, the item on the agenda is to, regarding the bids.
Right.
So tonight, we couldn't make a decision, we would have to bring it back if there was gonna be other council action concerning, because again, we do not have it in our, to actually make a decision tonight. We can just talk about not getting any bids, and we can talk, but, but I don't believe we can...
Should I take it back to finance?
You know, I guess, yeah, I mean, I, I think, Mayor, we probably have to disagree there maybe a little bit, I think we had to, but again, it's not urgent by any stretch, so I, I see no need to push it, if he wants to go back to finance or, or another committee to discuss further, yeah, if both balance sides did that.
And as I said, if the, the decision to be made is, again, you could list it, you could go that route, again, there's, obviously, that, that has its... The other thing is with, um, uh, trying to rebid it again, uh, obviously, we put a premium price on it, um, that, that was not reached. I guess, try to make the decision if you're interested in selling it without giving that, that premium price.
I'd say take it back to finance and hash it over there.
Okay, and on this one, I don't know if we have to really, but basically what we're doing is we'll just refer it back to the finance committee for, uh, to discuss again, and to see. And then see if there's a recommendation that comes out of that to, um, and to move forward. Okay?
Do we have an exam?
Ten minutes.
Any other discussion on this item?
Are you gonna look at selling any other lots there, or just that one?
Um...
Yeah, we're working on the survey piece, I think we're still working through that, but, uh, at this point, I don't...
The, the belief is, is that if we sold that one on the corner, the, any other lots, it would, would put a whole different situation because of the, the possibility of future easements, we'd rather, you know, in terms of...
Yeah, it's under my report.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, you're gonna say something on your report? Oh, okay, well, then we'll get to that.
It's under, sorry.
Please get away ahead on the...
Okay, um, okay, next we move on to Police Department, um, Chief Ringer, ready?
All right, uh, kind of getting to the middle to end of summer here, and, uh, so Brandon is, uh, scheduled to go back into the school the third week of August, uh, for a day for Teacher In-Service Day, uh, and then he'll be back full-time in the school the week of the twenty-third of August, starting kind of early this year, so, um, he'll be out of his night shift rotation on that third week of August and back into his school rotation. Uh, we did take delivery of our new patrol truck, um, and we got the graphics put on, uh, we're just waiting for a call from the upfitter to install all of our equipment into it, um, I, excuse me, I imagine it's gonna be a couple of weeks still before we, uh, get it, uh, fully equipped and out there on patrol. Part-time help, um, I hired Anastasia Makunda, she is from Eau Claire, she currently, uh, just finished her field training at, at the Oseo Police Department, um, and now she started with me on Tuesday, had her first day of training, and, uh, the thing with her is she has another semester of school left, she took her academy early, and then she's gonna go back for a semester of school, and they don't offer the class until, uh, next, uh, spring semester, so we, we have a little bit of time with her, um, and she's not applying anywhere full-time until she finishes her schooling, so... So that one is gonna be a good one to, to keep her out if everything works out well. Got some good news on the, the house on Seventh Avenue that you've heard me talk about quite a bit, we've been busy there with calls and things. Uh, this week, the bank actually took the house over, and they showed up and they, they secured it, um, and so that, that house is, is now secured a little better, and it is bank-owned at this point, so it's good.
So often we say, uh, we like to have a bank-owned house in town, but in that particular case...
Um, National Night Out, uh, Tuesday, August third, um, we've got tremendous support from our community, our businesses and organizations, and all of the, uh, first responder groups have agreed to, to, to be a part of it. Um, we're holding a kickball game during National Night Out, so it's going to be, uh, police officers, firefighters, ambulance personnel, we're all gonna play the kids in some big games of kickball, so, uh, so that's kind of our, our main event this year. Instead of a demonstration, we thought we would do a kickball game.
So August third?
August, Tuesday, August third.
The kids?
Yeah. Um, starting at five o'clock at the Orville Sports Complex, it's different this year, we're gonna hold it all in one location so that we could do the kickball game, and Greg, Greg thought it would be good, we could use a concession stand for serving food. Um, free food again, uh, by, sponsored by Maloney's and, uh, the Durian Smokehouse, generous donations by those guys. And like I said, we're gonna have a whole list of the businesses that have supported us this year, we're gonna have some great prizes for the kids, and, uh, should be a funny event, everybody's looking forward to it. That's all I have.
Movie at the end, I guess.
Yeah, thanks, man. Uh, the school district's gonna play, uh, Trolls World Tour, uh, after we're, we're finished with the National Night Out, so it'll be a nice long night for families to hang out.
Charlie Hills Coppers. Stay with the theme.
Smoking the van? You're aging yourself a little bit there, Steve.
You guys will have to make those recommendations to Greg.
Uh, any questions for the Police Department? Hearing none, move on to the Fire Department.
Chief King couldn't be here tonight, but, uh, this report is in front of you. Thanks, Andrew, our Fire Department, if you have any questions. He did ask me a note that when, while we were talking about, tell, working with Brian, the colony, um, has that response equipment that is, uh, exclusively, or a hundred percent grant funded.
Any questions on the, uh, on the monthly report from the Fire Chief? Don, you have a few things to add?
Yeah, just gonna add that, uh, I, I think since the last time we had a meeting, I know it's been a little longer this with the calendar, um, but we did have a public safety meeting, or Chief King did, um, presented to the Public Safety Committee the, um, his, his recommendation or his, his explanation of need for the lighter truck and some of the things that, uh, might bring, uh, emergency fire service in the community. Um, one of the things that came up at that meeting was kind of back to some discussion regarding the creation of a fire district, uh, and/or an updated, um, updated funding schedule agreement, uh, between the city and rural. Uh, Chief King and I did get a chance to meet with, uh, Don Harton from Rural last Friday, um, he understands where the city's coming from, he's gonna be discussing it at their rural meeting next Tuesday, and I will, I will be present at that as well to talk through, uh, what we're looking to do here. And at this point, here, you know, we're talking about a potential buy-in from the city side, because it appears that, that Rural has more vehicles that they purchased on their own than what we have, so basically, both, uh, Jamie and, uh, Mr. Harton are getting together, trying to, if they're gonna pull up the number of vehicles we have, when they were purchased, what's, uh, depreciation on them, and what those numbers would, might be, because I've heard, frankly, at a lot of our meetings, I've heard, well, you know, it's not in the city's best interest to go that route, but until you see it on paper, we really don't know. So again, they're working on that, and, uh, Jamie shared with me earlier today that, uh, they should have that done by next week. So I'll keep you posted on those, uh, those discussions at the next meeting.
Any questions, uh, on the Fire Department? Hearing none, Ambulance, Eric Miller?
Uh, everybody should have a copy of my report there in front of you. Does anyone have any questions at all? Relatively uneventful month, but again, our, probably our biggest concern is staffing again and trying to cover all the hours on the schedule. We average just a little over one call a day, um, so... We, we have been fortunate in that the majority of the calls that we haven't been able to cover are transfers from the hospital here to other hospitals, mainly it's up to Eau Claire. Refresh my memory for transports, you need how many? Two, and it would be minimum staffing of either, uh, E M R, emergency medical responder, and one E M T or two E M Ts. So we would be able to utilize an E M R in the traffic, yes, that would be responsible for traffic, correct?
And just to clarify that, but we still have to have two here ready to serve our area, so in essence, you need four people, so is that...
Yes, yes, because the two that would take the transfer would not be on the nine-one-one schedule, they would be on the transfer schedule. Or if a page comes in for a transfer, sometimes if someone is available, they will say, if the transfer is non-emergent and can wait thirty minutes, I can be there thirty minutes, that happens a lot. And a lot of the transfers are not emergent in such that they have to go within ten, fifteen minutes, so that, that works out to our benefit as well. So if there is a time when we can't get two, we're probably really short-staffed and just have a nine-one-one number.
And when you're saying about the hiring process is slowed, I mean, are there any of the prospects you have for people that work for other agencies that might come on and help us out?
Just one right now who has, um, she's taken her written test and failed, but she's re, retaking the test, uh, next week. And should she pass that, hopefully, um, she will be able to come online, uh, with her training right away. And, uh, there's one from the Pepin area that works on Pepin Ambulance and would be working here part-time as well, um, for us, and she starts her training on Monday. So what I meant by the process has slowed is just the hiring, there hasn't been any new applications that I've received within probably a month at least, solid.
And, and I know that we're talking about possibly having a class...
Yes.
This fall.
Correct.
And I know that, uh, obviously, it takes a while to build up to recruit people and so on and so forth, and have those efforts, uh, um, to get people signed up for potential, potential interest at this time.
I probably get one or two emails a month from people that are interested in the fall class. And, uh, that class, I would say, is probably going to fill up, not necessarily with everyone that is going to be eventually working for Duran Ambulance, but there will be other E M Ts that need to take the course, and they will be coming here to Duran to take it. Um, I'm also going to be pushing for, uh, a program at the high school for seniors to be able to take E M T class.
And that's worked out pretty well for us in the past, as far as, I know, one gal that's been fairly active, I think that's how she started with us.
Yeah, it's been a while, I think, since that has been offered at the high school, I, I don't know how long ago, but...
And the other thing too, I mean, and I know that situation, even if we're training, people are training here, taking the class, other agencies as long as we have, so... It's to get numbers for the class, because we have to have a minimum number.
Yes.
And so I mean, if, however that works out.
Maybe we can horn schwaggle them in the process.
I know, that's always part of the thing, there's always a little recruiting going on during the process.
Mike can show up with cookies and donuts.
Look at these beautiful ambulances, you could be working with.
Yeah, it's gonna, yeah, we work very hard to have them here.
Absolutely.
Any, uh, any other questions, uh, or any, uh, for the ambulance?
So is our roster that we currently have, or is there a pretty good percentage not doing a lot of hours?
Yes, yes.
As part of that summer?
Um, a little bit, um, a couple, a couple, two, three are, um, active in clinicals for paramedic school right now. Uh, one of the E M Ts moved, and she is also working for the ambulance in the city, the community that she moved to, and putting in, uh, a fair amount of hours here as well. So it's a combination of a lot of things, people are on vacation, and, um, I know some of our staff in the past have had the luxury of leaving work, however, as you are aware, everybody is short-staffed, um, including the service industry and hospitals, so that has changed for that E M T, and, um, that E M T has not been able to leave work just because of the staffing problems during the day, so all things like that, it just kind of snowballs and, and, uh, it, it affects us.
So, um, at the next, uh, safety meeting, Mr. Chair, about maybe putting in as a discussion item? Any other questions for ambulance? Hearing none, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Next move on to Public Works Utilities Engineers Report.
Yes, good evening, uh, quick summary update, the construction project's ongoing. You're probably all aware of the ongoing detour with utility work connections that started on Monday at Prospect and Third. Um, contractors finished, finished up storm sewer today, um, with the rain, their, the schedule, original schedule is to pave on Thursday and Friday, or else Friday and Saturday, the intersection work, um, that's what the contractor's telling us. The rain today, wait for some things to dry out and get the gravel in and so forth, so we actually didn't get as much rain as they predicted, looked like it went south of us, so if we don't get too much more tonight, but hopefully, the detour can be opened before the weekend, either on Friday or Saturday, but again, we're at the mercy of Monarch paving, the subcontractor doing the paving, sometimes they don't always show up when they're scheduled, so hopefully it happens that way. That's what the contractor's telling us, we'll be happy at Prospect and Third. Uh, the detour seems to be working well, um, so hopefully, we can get that complete and get the detour back open for everyone. So hopefully we can get that complete and get the detour back open for everyone.
Being that's a state, is there a certain time the state expects it to be open?
We've been in communication with the state. In fact, I do provide, I went back and forth with the state today when they, we thought it would be completed and I told him it's scheduled to be completed by Friday or Saturday. But if that doesn't happen, it'll be sometime next week. So he's okay with that. He put late next week into his closure of the detour permit, utility permit we have. So we're okay. Contractor originally said two to three days and that's what we told the DOT, but they're okay. We understand with the rain today and so forth, things could get pushed. So A1 on the Third Ave project, it should be done probably by the end of next week with all of the underground work. They have some service laterals to complete water and sanitary sewer and then storm sewer up in the S-curve area, which they plan on completing by the end of next week. So that'll complete all the underground work. They were planning on moving in a road construction crew on Thursday this week to start grading from Prospect, heading up the hill, starting grading out the subgrade and getting that ready to put some gravel down. So...
They move in today?
Yep. Did they move in today? Okay. So it's, drove through the project tonight, obviously it's pretty wet. So we'll have to wait for it to dry out a little bit and what they can get done, but warm weather is in the forecast. So that sand pretty much dries out pretty quick. So that'll, so it's right on A1's schedule and then probably a month and a half, two months ahead of our completion date schedule. So once they get it graded out, you'll start to see gravel. There'll be gravel access, you know, for the residents and then they'll follow up with curb and gutter. That'll take a couple of weeks to do and then they'll follow up with asphalt and restoration work. So they keep on their schedule. The weather holds out. No big rainstorms. Probably complete that project a month and a half, two months ahead of schedule, which will be nice that we can get better grass restoration, having things seeded in August and September rather than October and waiting for spring. So they got a couple of water main connections to do, a few of the intersections and then our pressure reducing valve at Ott Street. And that, those are all scheduled to be completed next week. So overall, it's going well. A good contractor again in anticipation of the rain event today. If you drive by the site, they have three or four foot high earth burns they put in. Most of the storm sewer on the slope of the hills all in and they got erosion control boxes around those. So even with any rain, it'll function much better than everything wide open, but good contractor. They know how to prepare for rain events pending, so how to control the runoff. The other project, SSG Skidsteer guy, he completed all the utilities on Dryer Street, water main, water service lateral, sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer allowance and storm sewer. Went up to the project, they put down gravel last week on Dryer Street. So that was nice. I've got gravel then sealed up before we got the rain today. So and they're timing their curb with the A1 curb. So once A1 curb contractor comes in to do the third Ave, they'll complete and go all the way through Dryer. It's the same contractor. So that's what we pushed SSG to do, to finish up Dryer Street, to gravel grade, get it ready for curb and gutter. So that can all be done with the Third Ave project before they went on to Laneville. They're currently putting in sanitary sewer on Laneville. Say they're a few hundred feet south of Lee Street. I think they were just about up to our critical storm sewer crossing that, according to Kevin. So deep sanitary, like I said, we had a critical crossing down near Settle Myers House in that area and they're right up to that point and it ended up right at design. We had about a foot between our sanitary and our big 30, 36 inch storm sewer. Those are kind of the things engineers worry about and lose sleep about. So especially when they have the big 20 foot deep sanitary sewer, we had to make sure everything's right on grade to get underneath that storm sewer, otherwise we'd add issues. So we're through the worst of that too. So...
Quick question, we mentioned about by the Settle Myers House. That work that we did a few years ago to deal with that runoff, is that all being torn out? Part of that is still, the work we did is still gonna be there?
That's the pipe we have to get under is that 36 inch.
Okay.
Pipe and that's stained. We'll be tying into it and putting some new inlet structures on the curb, but that actual pipe itself is stained.
So with the curb and gutter, there'll be improved drainage in that area, that whole area of Laneville. So that's what I have, continuing to make progress. SSG right now, just looking at their perennial foot of pipe they're putting in, they appear to be right on schedule with our completion date, if not a little bit ahead of schedule. They brought in a new backhoe operator that has a little bit more experience and is going a little bit faster than the previous person. So give the contractor some credit. He really went out and found another operator to make some quick progress. So should go fine. I don't know, Matt, did I forgot anything? You got anything? Oh, poles. Was getting a little tense working with Excel Energy to move all the poles that we needed to move to stay on schedule for the curb and gutter. But they went out and hired a subcontractor called Michaels that came in earlier last week. First they said it was gonna take them two to three weeks to get all the poles in on Third and Dryer and they got it done in like half the time. So that's, seems to be working out fine. So it was a little tense on if we're there, we're gonna be holding up A1 in their construction. But Excel came through and hired a subcontractor that the poles moved. We have a meeting with them next week. It sounds like they're gonna be redoing all the poles on Laneville Avenue now too, with all new poles and new wiring and so forth. So a little change of their plan. They were only moving the poles that were conflicting with our curb and gutter. Now they're telling us they're gonna redo all of them. So... So it'll be new electrical poles, new electrical wiring. We're working with the N-Tech cable companies and so forth. They're gonna be redoing their wiring with the new Excel poles. So that coordination is falling into place.
Okay, any questions for the city engineer?
I said one more thing, Russ. You mentioned this at the last meeting, but I did sign off today on the first draw of our block grant.
Oh, good.
That Cedar prepared for submission. So $116,000. Probably with the next couple items here with cash flow and things of that nature.
That'll help.
Next we have monthly report, Public Works Utilities, Super Ten Kilos.
Yes, so Russ provided me tonight with the official CSM for that lot, which would be lot five and six of Tower Hill addition. We kept our 50 feet. So there was that existing utility easement for 25 feet. We basically resurveyed the lot. We're keeping 50 feet. So we upped that easement basically by 25. So we're gonna keep 50. And then we have the CSM all prepared. We're gonna make, we're gonna make rest of that one big lot. So it'll be 200 foot frontage. That's all taken care of. We have the official CSM here. It's just gotta go and all go through the process on plan commission and then going back and council. So now that we have everything officially done, we can set up a plan commission meeting and then we'll get on our council in the next, depending on how fast we do a plan commission meeting. Set up those tend to take, those tend to be a little bit more difficult than the council. So that's ready to move forward.
We've resold our request too, so we'll have plan commission meeting prior for next meeting. So...
Yeah, so that's ready to move forward as well. Go around lot. Once we get that CSM done, then we can decide whether to assemble it or however we're gonna do with it. So that's where we're at. As far as our staff, they see them all the pink yellow curves and be working on that periodically this week. And then they'll transition into the white crosswalks. They think it'll take us about two to three weeks when we get good weather. They'll be doing that for a while. RBC news, I was told that all of our resin and parts to finish, RBC, were supposed to be delivered to the factory by this week and it'd take two weeks for them to assemble it. And so it should be done and ready to be shipped to us by the first of August. And we'll just have to coordinate a date with the crane company and the trucking company to essentially get it. Coming along, we should, I venture to say, we'll be in and functioning around the middle of August. We are seeing scrockets and chains and all the parts and pieces that we needed showing up at the sewer plant. So basically we're just waiting for the resin to get to the factory so they can finish the media. We're also conducting valve turning over the next two months here. 300 water main valves in town that have to be manually turned up and down every other year. So that takes some time. So you'll see guys kind of, you know, see trucks parked in the middle of the road flashing lights on. More than likely they're turning new valves. So that's a project that has to be done this year as well. Pool, pool is running, maintaining, retaining water quality. Per our calculations, we are going through 12,300 gallon a day of water. That's not a loss, that's just the total amount of water that's going through the pool meter on a daily basis. You know, that's going to the last house, going to the pool and slide. I don't exactly know how much is being used in the shower and things like that. So we're probably still right around that eight, nine thousand gallon loss like we always have now. So some numbers for that. Otherwise, that's all I got. Got the next two things on here unless you got any questions.
How's the boiler working up there?
Boiler, boiler's been working good. We had some fuse issues here, I think, wasn't it late last week? We blew a fuse. I got that fixed. The capacitor, there's a circulation motor that pulls the water, pushes the water through the furnace. The capacitor on that, on that motor went bad. Basically got that fixed. It's functioning, it's heating. But it's, it's on a half a leg. You know, as I explained, this spring, we took parts and pieces from, there's three stages, four stages that I have boiler. Stage three is completely non-functional. So we took stages from stage three and put them in stage one and two to get those igniters working. We took a blower off stage four and moved it to stage two to get the blower, the blower working. So we're limping it through, but it's, it's not gonna last much longer. I venture to say...
The water could be potentially a little cooler because I was...
It hasn't, you know, it hasn't dipped below 80. When we had the fuse issue and the capacity issue Wednesday or Thursday or Friday in the last week or what exact day it was, it got down to about 80. But that's the lowest it's gotten. Normally it runs 84 to 86.
But MacGyver would be proud of the setup.
Very proud of us, yes. And Fire Department, MacGyver's very proud of her works, but MacGyver and all that. Mike Mills does a very nice job of making sure that we get the best all of it before sticking a bunch of money into it. But just keep in mind that boiler, you know, we're not gonna get through this year. I'd be extremely surprised if it works next year or you're gonna stick thousands of dollars into it to get it up and running properly.
Well, across that bridge, we can get there.
Across that bridge next year, we're just gonna get through this year.
And we'll see where we're at. Okay. Anything else? Matt?
Uh, no.
Any questions for Public Works Utilities? Okay, one, none. We'll move on to discussion, possible action regarding the request and certification of payment number two from A1 Excavating in the amount of $224,808.95 to the Third Avenue East reconstruction project. Russ?
Yes, obviously this pay request were much less than the work they have completed since they're behind a couple of weeks in terms of submitting it to when we get it on the council. But same format you've seen before. You have the cover page with the original contract sum. The completed and stored to date, holding 5% retainage. So you have a total less retainage and then you approved the pay request number one. That's listed there for 165, 63231 last month. So this payment request is about $224,808.95. All work is satisfactory and we're recommending payment as requested. The other sheets again are the breakdowns between your different accounts, street, storm sewer, sanitary water, unit price contract. If you look through that, you can see the amount completed to date under each one of those column items. So any questions, comments?
With the, if you want to give us a quick timeline now with as far as the financing?
So last I heard from Sean, it was, so we were slated to get, we were looking at selling the work, we were looking at getting our financing forward to lock, so I think this could be pushed back to the 18th. Again, we have plenty of money in the bank to cover these projects until the bond funds come in. Shouldn't go later than the 20th of August. I would anticipate that we probably have another pay request from A1 and Skidsteer guy. And we'll be fine. Our tax money's come in in August as well. So we have plenty to tie this off.
And with the, with the financing part of it, on the 28th, our next meeting, right? Is that my...
Correct, yeah.
On 28th. So, but the sale's gonna happen that day?
Well, similar to, we'll have bids toward just like, I guess, hung this back in 2018 and we had the last, last debt bids to take care of. So I guess it has been that long since all of you probably, I can see most.
Okay, with something like...
Motion to approve pay request number two for A1 Excavating for $124,808.95.
Is the motion second to approve the pay request, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Councilmember Schofield.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartung.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion's agreed too. Next we move on to discussion, possible action regarding a change order for the Third Avenue project, the S-curve issue. Who wants to take the lead on this?
So the S-curve issue, the S-curve area, we have roughly 350 linear feet of road where we have some really bad clay soil. It's really soft, it's not drying up. So we need to do a soil correction in that area. It just happens to be right in between, you know, we did a soil boring probably 100 feet before the S-curve and about 100 feet after the S-curve with great sandy conditions. And the digging saw that, but we just have about 350 foot area right through that S-curve with some very horrible clay soil. So we need to do a soil correction in that 350 feet. So we talked about at Public Works was, what we're gonna do is we wanna excavate down an extra, an extra foot in that area and then we'll do a proof roll to make sure that we got all of the unsuitable soil. And then we'll add a foot of sand in and then we'll put our normal rock back on. If the proof roll doesn't, doesn't pan out the way we think it needs to, we do have a cost for fabric to go in. So we lay fabric down and then we put our sand and then we put our rock. So at worst case scenario, between the sand, the extra excavating and the fabric should be $14,260, worst case scenario. We're hoping we don't need to use the fabric at all, which is about $4,000. But you're still gonna have that about $4,500 in extra excavation and about $5,000 in sand if we dig down that foot. So worst case scenario should be $14,260.
And Committee Chair Hartung, this was in front of the committee and we did have a recommendation?
Yeah, I think we have to do it.
That's what the committee, yeah. As far as fitting into the $14,000, as far as the overall price tag of this, we always have a few change orders usually on most projects and this is not overwhelming.
No, I think our last project, as I explained to the Public Works Committee, we had a $20,000 change order. Turned out that we didn't, we went through the change order just to make sure that we had the money there and everything. had the money there and everybody understood where we were, but when, when the project was all over, we didn't use, we didn't use a dime, we came in right on, right on schedule with savings that we, that we created throughout the project and other places, like we didn't rip out too much asphalt at some intersections that we thought we were going to, you know, we didn't put as much four inch or six inch lateral piping in that we thought we were going to, you know, we, and we didn't use as much rock as we thought we were going to or we needed to after the proof roll or something like that, so. Not saying that, that that could happen on this project, but, you know, we always want to make sure that anything that's not in the bid or not in the scope of the project will come back here with a change order, just so you folks know what could happen. And that, that number, we, that 350 feet, that could, that could go down to 200 feet once we excavate it out and do, and do the proof roll, you know, so we are bringing you worst case numbers.
Don't, don't we put something, Russ, too, in there, isn't a contingency number just for this kind of stuff?
Yeah, typically after bidding, we, you know, project came in quite a bit under your original estimated budget, but typically on any construction project, we say, you know, carry a, a 3 to 5% contingency for any surprises, and with this item and with everything else that's been completed, you'll be well below that typical 3% contingency item.
In the event of...
For the size of the project.
Of so much of the underground, because usually that's where the surprise is, is when you dig.
Exactly, right.
And also mostly underground work is getting completed, that puts us in a, now it's just the surface stuff.
Right, and we know the whole rest of the road is good sandy material, not going to need any excavation bowl, subgrade and soil repairs, you know, even with the rain, once we get some heat and sun on it, it dries out pretty good, so we don't expect any other surprises or large change orders coming in for Third Ave. Done very well.
Okay, is there any more questions on this? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the change order for the S-curve.
Second.
And just put in the, not to exceed the 14,000.
Not to exceed 14, whatever.
260. 260. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, there was a second, okay. We do have a motion and second for the change order for Third Avenue for the S-curve, roll call please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Scofield.
Yes.
All in favor?
Okay, motion's agreed to. Next, we move on to closed session, the council will convene into closed session pursuant Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C and Wisconsin State Statute 19851F for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data, and further for the considering of financial, medical...